Good morning. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. We are still one member short of a full quorum, but we are going to begin our general meeting right now with a moment of inspiration. If I could please have everybody's attention in council chambers. Today is Tuesday, March 28th, and 2005, we are here in John Farrow Council Chambers, being broadcast on channel 35 as well. And I'd like to welcome a special guest here for a moment of inspiration, Ernesto Medina, the Very Reverend Ernesto Medina, is Provost of the Cathedral Center for the Episcopal Diocese of Los Angeles. I think many of us here are familiar with Ernie, in addition to his priestly duties. Father Medina is an Echo Park resident and social justice activist without parallel. He works on everything from tenants' rights issues to improving the park there in Echo Park, and Ernie is really somebody who's been there for the community. So, thank you, Father Medina, for being here for this moment of inspiration, and the microphone is yours.
Thank you. I bring greetings from the Bishop of Los Angeles and the people of the Episcopal Diocese of Los Angeles. Let us pray. Loving God, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the communities of this earth, especially this, the city of angels. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order, and that men and women from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity. O God, the fountain of wisdom, whose will is good and gracious and whose law is truth, we pray you so to guide and bless our representatives on city council assembled, that they may enact such laws as shall please you, to the glory of your name and the welfare of this people. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much, Father Medina. We appreciate that moment of inspiration. This time, I'd like to recognize Council President Padilla for a special presentation with a very special guest who is here with us today in council chambers. And to correct the record, it's Tuesday, March 29th.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, members of the public, this is indeed a great honor for me to introduce a very important leader in our country and our country's history, as she visits Los Angeles and City Hall this morning. It's a welcome back to her, but I think her first time here within council chambers, none other than the Honorable Geraldine Ferraro. Let's give her a round of applause. And as I mentioned to her this morning, anybody by the last name of Ferraro was always welcome in these council chambers. As many of you know, then Congresswoman Geraldine Ferraro made history when she was selected as Vice President nominee in 1984 for the Democratic Party, running alongside Walter Mondale. But prior to that, her history is in New York, ultimately in New York. Born in New York, raised a family in New York, taught second grade in public schools in New York, and elected to Congress to represent Queens in the year of 1978. Her tenure in Congress allowed her to serve amongst other committees, the Public Works Committee, the Budget Committee, two committees very important to the city of Los Angeles, as well as the Select Committee on Aging, where she fought proposed cuts in Social Security and Medicare. How far we've come and how some of the battles remain the same. And after her unsuccessful run as Vice President for Vice President in 1984, her public service didn't stop there. She continues to be involved in government and in politics, most recently being appointed by President Clinton to lead the United States delegation to United Nations Human Rights Commission, as well as serving as a member of the Council on Foreign Relations. We welcome her to the city of Los Angeles, we welcome her back here to City Hall, and colleagues, on behalf of all of us, it's my pleasure to present this certificate of welcome to the Honorable Geraldine Ferraro.
I have to pull this down a little bit because I'm a little bit shorter than the President. I want to thank you for inviting me here today, and all of you for being so gracious and having me come for you. I must say, I had never been inside the chambers. I've been to Los Angeles numerous times, I came here as a tourist first with my kids, when they were very little, and then as platform chair in early 1984, where we did hearings here on civil rights, because this was a city that kind of understood that issue and was able to come and present the democratic view on what we should be pursuing in 1984 as we went into the presidential campaign, never thinking for one minute that I was going to be on the ticket. In 1984, I did come back, and on one of these outside verandas, did an event with Tom Bradley, who was just wonderful, and I've just been pulling out pictures from the campaign, and one of those was with him. I also have to tell you about Mr. Ferraro, John Ferraro, and when he ran for mayor, he sent me a button that said "Ferraro for Ferraro." So, I do have, and it's still in my drawer, and still very much part of the politics of my life, I want to tell you that I'm also delighted to be here, because this is a city that means so much to so many people throughout the country, and we do share a lot of concerns. I was watching the mayoral debate last night, and I saw the discussion of education, I saw the discussion of affordable housing, I saw the discussion of security, and of course, we all know from New York, we all know Bill Bratton, and what a wonderful job he did there. Those are the issues that we in New York face, so we can kind of hold hands on those as we go through, whether it's the city council legislation, or it's through state or federal attention to those issues, knowing that we actually are in the same place. But there's one other issue that kind of draws us together, and that's 9/11. We're the city that can look out our office windows, we are GCG, we're so delighted that Rosenkindle is now part of our family, but our office in New York looks down on the site. We see what happened as a result of those two planes hitting that building, those buildings. Those planes were coming out to Los Angeles. You, I'm sure, had people on there who you know, and I think that that's another thing that really joins us together as we look to the security of this nation and our home security. So, I am really very, very pleased to have this opportunity to spend some time with you, to get to know some of you. I'm not a supporter of term limits, and really wish that I could come back year after year after year and see all of you here, but let me just tell you that for the period of time that you've been in, you've done an outstanding job, and people notice it. So, thank you for having me here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ferraro, if we can ask you one last honor, and ask everybody, please, to rise in chambers if you would do the salute to the flag today, we'd be honored.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Cardenas Garcetti, Grill, Hahn LeBonge, Ludlow Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vivergos, and Westine Padilla, 12 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. We've had our moment of inspiration, our flag salute before calling roll. Next item, please.
First order of business is approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Zion moves, Mr. Reyes seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas moves, and Mr. Ludlow seconds.
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, now it's time for public comment. I'd like to invite forward, we have one person, Derek Errol Chambly. Is Mr. Chambly in the chambers? The microphone is yours, sir.
Please, sir. I'm Derek Chambly. I'm from, originally St. Paul, Minnesota. I'm representing a private company from Tampa, Florida, Intelligent Enterprises Incorporated. I'm organizing the homeless on the street here in Los Angeles, and I think you have a very critical problem I think we need to address. We're doing quite a bit of street work. I specialize on putting together private networks of individuals that want to help the homeless, as well as giving the homeless a voice by organizing a democratic forum of homeless people, so that we can begin to get individual homeless people help. We concentrate primarily with motivated homeless people that can still work and pay their own rent. There's a critical problem, especially in downtown. We intend to address the relocation of homeless people in the so-called Skid Row District of downtown. I think it's very important that we stand up for the justice and the legal rights for every individual. Abraham Lincoln said, "We're dedicated to a proposition that all men are created equal." It's come to my attention that there are two council people involved in a town hall meeting. I hope that this flyer is accurate. For 7:00 tomorrow at the Hollywood United Methodist Church, I've been organizing on the streets of Hollywood in the Walk of Fame, we have a number of homeless people that are in wheelchairs there, and I think it's very important that we get immediate help for any individual that's in a wheelchair an extended length of time on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Councilperson Tom LeBonge and Eric Garcetti, I haven't been able to meet them, I did meet with one of the aides, Joshua, for a moment, he's checking to see if they will be there at the meeting tomorrow. I've called the contact person, Sarah Phelps, at this number, I've gotten no response. The homeless have, we've been passing these out and trying to recruit homeless people to come to the meeting to get help, but we're getting no response from the organizers, and so a number of homeless people are very skeptical about this. One thing that we intend to do is have meetings at the downtown public library. I've had 150 meetings throughout the country in seven other cities, where the homeless can come to the meeting, and we can begin to address their individual needs. I think it's very important that this council, and especially the mayor, take this very seriously. I understand there's a campaign going on, I have been up to both the mayor's office and the councilman's office that's running against Mayor Hahn. I think what you're looking at is a tremendous influx of not only workers that are on the street until they can get a place to stay and pay their own rent, just an influx of homeless people from all over. I, quite frankly, have organized the homeless in St. Paul, Minneapolis, Milwaukee, and four cities in Florida, Jacksonville, Orlando, Tampa, and St. Pete. I have never seen such a critical problem with the homeless, and something must be done. I'm acting on a higher authority to turn this city around, and that's why I'm here today, to follow up and see if I can work with this council. I've been up to several council people's offices. I'm not convinced that this mayor is really addressing this issue, and I think there are a lot of resources being wasted here because we're not connecting with the people on the street. We must solve the homeless problem in America. You cannot have a great city, Los Angeles, unless you address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have two more presentations, that closes public comment for today. We have two more presentations. I'd like to recognize first, Mr. Martin Ludlow, from the great 10th District.
Running alongside Walter Mondale, but prior to that, her history is in New York, ultimately, New York. Born in New York, raised a family in New York, taught second grade in public schools in New York, and elected to Congress to represent Queens in the year of 1978. Her tenure in Congress allowed her to serve amongst other committees, the Public Works Committee, the Budget Committee, two committees very important to the city of Los Angeles, as well as the Select Committee on Aging, where she fought proposed cuts in Social Security and Medicare. How far we've come and how some of the battles remain the same. And after her unsuccessful run as Vice President, for Vice President, in 1984, her public service didn't stop there. She continues to be involved in government and in politics, most recently being appointed by President Clinton to lead the United States delegation to the United Nations Human Rights Commission, as well as serving as a member of the Council on Foreign Relations. We welcome her to the city of Los Angeles. We welcome her back here to City Hall and colleagues. On behalf of all of us, it's my pleasure to present this certificate of welcome to the Honorable Geraldine Ferraro.
I have to pull this down a little bit because I'm a little bit shorter than the President. I want to thank you for inviting me here today and all of you for being so gracious and having me come for you. I must say, I had never been inside the chambers. I've been to Los Angeles numerous times. I came here as a tourist first with my kids when they were very little, and then as Platform Chair in 19, early 1984, where we did hearings here on civil rights, because this was a city that kind of understood that issue and was able to come and present the democratic view on what we should be pursuing in 1984 as we went into the presidential campaign, never thinking for one minute that I was going to be on the ticket. In 1984, I did come back and on one of these outside verandas, did an event with Tom Bradley, who was just wonderful. And I've just been pulling out pictures from the campaign and one of those was with him. I also have to tell you about Mr. Ferraro, John Ferraro, and when he ran for mayor, he sent me a button that said, "Ferraro for Ferraro." So I do have, and it's still in my drawer and still very much part of the politics of my life. I want to tell you that I'm also delighted to be here because this is a city that means so much to so many people throughout the country. And we do, we do share a lot of concerns. I was watching the mayoral debate last night and I saw the discussion of education. I saw the discussion of affordable housing. I saw the discussion of security. And of course, we all know, from New York, we all know Bill Bratton, and what a wonderful job he did there. Those are the issues that we in New York face. So we can kind of hold hands on those as we go through, whether it's a city council legislation or it's through state or federal attention to those issues, knowing that we actually are in the same place. But there's one other, one other issue that kind of draws us together, and that's 9/11. We, we're the city that can look out our office windows. We are GCG. We're so delighted that Rosenkindle is now part of our family. But our office in New York looks down on the site. We see what happened as a result of those two planes hitting that building, those buildings. Those planes were coming out to Los Angeles. You, I'm sure, had people on there who you know. And I think that that's another thing that really joins us together as we look to the security of this nation and our home security. So I am really very, very pleased to have this opportunity to spend some time with you, to get to know some of you. I'm not a supporter of term limits and really wish that I could come back year after year after year and see all of you here. But let me just tell you that for the period of time that you've been in, you've done an outstanding job and people notice it. So thank you for having me here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Ferraro, if we can ask you one last honor and ask everybody, please, to rise in chambers. If you would do the salute to the flag today, we'd be honored.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Adam Clark, if you can call the roll, please.
Cardenas Garcetti, Grohl, Hahn, LeBonge, Ledlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vierigosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 12 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. We've had our moment of inspiration, our flag salute before calling roll. Next item, please.
First order of business is approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Zine moves, Mr. Reyes seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas moves and Mr. Ledlow seconds.
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay. Now it's time for public comment. I'd like to invite forward, we have one person, Derek Errol Chambly. Is Mr. Chambly in the chambers? The microphone is yours, sir. Please, sir.
I'm Derek Chambly. I'm from, originally, St. Paul, Minnesota. I'm representing a private company from Tampa, Florida, Intelligent Enterprises Incorporated. I'm organizing the homeless on the street here in Los Angeles. And I think you have a very critical problem I think we need to address. We're doing quite a bit of street work. I specialize on putting together private networks of individuals that want to help the homeless, as well as giving the homeless a voice by organizing a democratic forum of homeless people so that we can begin to get individual homeless people help. We concentrate primarily with motivated homeless people that can still work and pay their own rent. There's a critical problem, especially in downtown. We intend to address the relocation of homeless people in the so-called Skid Row District of downtown. I think it's very important that we stand up for the justice and the legal rights for every individual. Abraham Lincoln said, "We're dedicated to a proposition that all men are created equal." It's come to my attention that there are two council people involved in a town hall meeting. I hope that this flyer is accurate. For 7:00 tomorrow at the Hollywood United Methodist Church, I've been organizing on the streets of Hollywood in the Walk of Fame. We have a number of homeless people that are in wheelchairs there. And I think it's very important that we get the immediate help for any individual that's in a wheelchair an extended length of time on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Councilperson Tom LeBonge and Eric Garcetti, I haven't been able to meet them. I did meet with one of the aides, Joshua, for a moment. He's checking to see if they will be there at the meeting tomorrow. I've called the contact person, Sarah Phelps, at this number. I've gotten no response. The homeless have, we've been passing these out and trying to recruit homeless people to come to the meeting to get help, but we're getting no response from the organizers. And so a number of homeless people are very skeptical about this. One thing that we intend to do is have meetings at the downtown public library. I've had 150 meetings throughout the country in seven other cities where the homeless can come to the meeting and we can begin to address their individual needs. I think it's very important that this council, and especially the mayor, take this very seriously. I understand there's a campaign going on. I have been up to both the mayor's office and the councilman's office that's running against Mayor Hahn. I think what you're looking at is a tremendous influx of not only workers that are on the street until they can get a place to stay and pay their own rent, just an influx of homeless people from all over. I, quite frankly, have organized the homeless in St. Paul, Minneapolis, Milwaukee, and four cities in Florida, Jacksonville, Orlando, Tampa, and St. Pete. I have never seen such a critical problem with the homeless. And something must be done. I'm acting on a higher authority to turn this city around. And that's why I'm here today to follow up and see if I can work with this council. I've been up to several council people's offices. I'm not convinced that this mayor is really addressing this issue. And I think there are a lot of resources being wasted here because we're not connecting with the people on the street. We must solve the homeless problem in America. You cannot have a great city, Los Angeles, unless you address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I, for my part, will be there tomorrow night, so I look forward to seeing you there. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, and you are?
Mr. Garcetti. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have two more presentations. That closes public comment for today. We have two more presentations. I'd like to recognize first, Mr. Martin Ledlow from the great 10th District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to ask a couple of my colleagues to join me. I know we could put almost everybody up here, but Councilmember Vierigosa, Councilmember Misakowski, Councilmember Zine. I know that there, at least if Councilmember Parks would care to join us. This is an honor for the city today as we celebrate the retirement of Commander Paul Kim. And I'm going to ask, we've got two deputy chiefs here, if they could join us up here. And we've got family and associates, anybody here, anybody here that's here to celebrate Paul Kim, come on up and join us here at the podium before we, before we move forward. I know it's gonna, it's gonna be cozy up here. Outstanding. Colleagues, today we are here to celebrate and honor the achievements of Commander Paul Kim during his 27 years of public service as an LAPD officer. Commander Kim officially retired from the Los Angeles City Council on March 5th and of this year as the highest-ranking Asian-American staff officer in the history of the department. I also see Councilmember Smith who is here, if he'd care to join us as well. Commander Kim began his LAPD career in 1977 as a recruit officer for the police academy, and in 1978 became a police officer on the Rampart Patrol. During his illustrious career, Commander Kim initiated the Stop the Violence Movement, which became a department-wide crime control tool and community mobilization tool. Commander Kim also initiated the Good Deed Lead Program to facilitate employees in recognizing other employees for extra service and small acts of kindness. Commander Kim's tireless efforts on behalf of the city of Los Angeles has been recognized far and wide. Although it would take way too long to list everything here, we thought we would identify just a few of these recognitions. He has been a recipient of the Martin Luther King Parade Committee's Unity Leadership Award, and has been recognized as a community builder in multicultural relations. He's also been a recipient of the Quality of Service Management Achievement Award from the LAPD in March of 2000. Commander Kim received the Republic of Korea's Presidential Dongbok Medal for his public service to Korean Americans in the United States of America. Commander Kim also spent time serving on a variety of very important boards. He is a chairperson of the Justice for Murdered Children, a crime victim advocacy group for unsolved murders of young people in South Los Angeles. He also serves as a board member for the Coral Leadership Foundation, as well as being a columnist for Radio Korea, the largest Korean-language radio station outside of Korea. Commander Kim also found time in that busy schedule to earn his Bachelor's of Science degree in management, a Master's in public administration, both from Pepperdine University, and yes, colleagues, a PhD in public administration from the University of Laverne. We are here joined by many of his colleagues, rank and file, command, as well as members of the Los Angeles City Council. Before we present this commendation to him, I'm first going to turn to the chairperson of public safety to say a few words, followed by Councilmember Vierigosa, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Smith, and then we will bring, and Zine, Zine is standing right behind me. I didn't see him there. Please welcome the chairperson of public safety, Councilmember Misakowski.
Thank you, Councilmember Ledlow. This is an incredible day. It's an incredible array of not only council members, and I know that literally all the council members could stand up here, but not only family members, but I think as many colleagues of Commander Kim who are standing here today are tribute and a representation of the respect and value that Commander Kim has earned in the Los Angeles Police Department. And he's earned it not only for the amazing array of things that Councilmember Ledlow indicated, but also, not only as Chair of Public Safety have I gotten to know him, but as Councilmember on the West Side. For many, many years, Commander Kim, in earlier ranks, provided incredible service to the West Side of Los Angeles. He was very, very influential at the West Bureau in terms of dealing with traffic, something we've heard a little bit about and something we hear an awful lot about on the West Side. He worked with innovative ideas, community police advisory boards, and really agreed that in certain areas of the city, the policing involved working with ideas, working with community on the issue of traffic and mobility. So I think as we've heard from, not only from his policing career and his police services and his incredible knowledge, he has really taken that and moved beyond just the limits of ordinary policing, doing the kinds of things that he was, that Councilmember Ledlow talked about in terms of good deeds and recognizing the advocacy for children of violence. It really reaches beyond the normal confines of the box of a police officer. And I think that is what Commander Kim has been about his whole career, and that it's reaching outside of the box, reaching to community, reaching across communities, and saying, "We are in this together, and there's no idea that's not worth listening to and working on, even if it's not in the police manual." So I think it's a great, great credit to him of the people who are standing here today, but mostly it's a great credit to his career, that he has risen to this level and has this many friends, this many community supporters, this many councilmembers, who really just want to say thank you to Commander Kim for the incredible service that he's provided to the city of LA, and that we know, given the kind of person he is, he's going to continue to provide to the city of LA for years into his retirement. So Commander, congratulations.
I'm third in a long parade of council members who are going to extol the virtues of Paul Kim. And I can tell you that while I don't know him as long as Councilmember Misakowski, in the time I've gotten to know Paul Kim, he's a man of many firsts. But first and foremost, he's a man for all people. You know, when you're the first of your group to attain the status in, and a position of power in the LAPD, there's responsibilities that come with it. One responsibility is not just to be able to advocate for your own community, but to be a bridge with the many communities that make up Los Angeles and the many communities that are represented in our police department. And you've been a great ambassador as a first. And what you do when you're the first is you demonstrate to people that it's going to be okay, that we can have talent who come from various parts of the country and the world, and that talent will be able to contribute just as talent before it has contributed. And I thank you for that, for being a great ambassador. I also know that you have a partner in life, Kaylin Kim, your wife, an attorney. And in addition to the fact that you two are a dynamic power couple in the city of Los Angeles, they've had a great ability to kind of complement one another over the years. And now, in addition to all of those degrees, you're on your way to become a lawyer as well. So a doctorate, a Master's, a BA, and a law degree. That's great. So congratulations to you, Commander Kim. We look forward to your new efforts as a lawyer and an advocate here in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. I think Paul's accolades as far as his police work are well documented. But I think what I appreciate most about him is that he has been a mainstay in the community, sometimes the only voice, the only visible representation from the Korean community that relieved and eliminated a great deal of fear, and in many instances, gave light to subjects that had not been spoken before. And I think to carry that burden for an entire community sometimes is exhaustive, in addition to doing your job. And having had a role in promoting him a couple of times, it's, those are the kind of proud promotions that you feel good about because he's a good person, and certainly the fact that he certainly has the skills. But in so many times, we forget about the fact that being a resident of the city of LA and also carrying that community torch is equally as important because they come to Paul when they feel as though there is no other outlet. They come to Paul when they view they're not being satisfied, and they come to Paul when there are issues that will never come to the attention of the Los Angeles Police Department. So I'm just appreciative of the role that he played in the community, and he continues that, and also was very instrumental, not only being the first Korean captain, first Korean commander, also aiding Terry Harap becoming the first Japanese-American captain, and also other firsts, being a mainstay in the Asian Pacific Islander Police Association, so that they got an opportunity to talk to people at that level, to understand how they could become sergeants, lieutenants, captains. And so that's the role that he played, and hopefully there are those that are in the department that will fill that void once he leaves. And so congratulations, Paul. Thank you. It's a pleasure when you can acknowledge someone like Paul Kim, who's a policeman's policeman. I first met Paul when I was at the Police Protective League. He was working Internal Affairs, and he was down on an investigation. And his professionalism, his insight, his determination, that's how we first met. And he was there doing his job. I wasn't involved. He wasn't investigating me. So I didn't get any days on that one. And that's how we first met, and I've seen his career blossom from that point. When West Bureau didn't have a deputy chief, Paul Kim was working seven days a week. When they were having demonstrations in West Bureau in West Los Angeles, Paul Kim was there seven days a week. Anytime they had a situation that took place, Paul Kim was there as a staunch law enforcement supporter, leader in the community. He was in charge of the Reserve Program for a period of time. And I remember we had a training day on a Saturday, and Paul Kim was there at 7:00 in the morning with the Reserve Officers who were at the Academy for a training program. Paul Kim is a cop's cop. He's a manager, he's a leader. I didn't know he'd received his PhD, and he's going to go on to be an accomplished attorney. But I've known him as a person who's got a huge heart, wonderful spirit, always has a smile, and can always help resolve an issue, always resolve a problem. He's done that through his entire career at the Los Angeles Police Department. It's a pleasure knowing him. I wish him well in his future endeavors, Paul. You've been a good friend. I know that when my son went to West Bureau, you were like the guardian angel, making sure he didn't get in trouble. And I'll never forget that. You've always been there, not only for my son, but for me and everyone else within the LAPD and the community, and a leader in the Korean community. So God bless you and your family. I wish you well in your future endeavors. You deserve it all. And that monthly paycheck that comes out now, all you got to do is wake up the first of the month. You get that paycheck, that retirement that you well, so well-deserve, so well-earned, that'll keep you happy. God bless you. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm very pleased to be here to recognize Paul, not just because he was a great cop, but because he lives in the 12th District, and we're very proud to have him there. Paul, you know, everyone's talked about Paul's accomplishments as a police officer, and obviously, he was a great cop. He rose through the ranks because everybody liked him. They trusted him. He was a great cop. He represented LAPD very well. But also, he's a great citizen. I've seen Paul at public events as a citizen, comes out and supports the community. I've seen him out there. I saw him out a couple of times, and not in uniform, not on duty, just making sure the recruitment people were out there recruiting police officers, doing his job as a citizen, but also as a commander in LAPD. And so I am very pleased to be here to recognize you today and say to you, Paul, you know, the fastest-growing population of the 12th Council District is the Korean population. And I hope you will help us be that bridge to make them feel welcome to work with us, with that community, and make sure that the Koreans are very welcome in the 12th District, that they're a growing population and they're loved and supported. And you will be a great assistance to me and others in the city of LA to keep being a great citizen, which you've already been, but also just continue to work for us out there in the 12th District. And we're proud to have you a citizen, Paul Kim, and look forward to working with you in that capacity, and your lovely wife also. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, thank you very much. But I was the councilman who, district he lived before he moved to the 12th. And how great it was. He moved, he moved, he just moved, but he's still part of the city. And behind every great man is a great wife, and Kaylin is his great wife who passed the bar on her first time. I just want to give her recognition and support. But Paul, years ago, and I know Geraldine Ferraro mentioned John Ferraro, and all the time, the time we mentioned John Ferraro, there was an effort when much of Koreatown was in the 4th District, and there was that first outpost put on, and you may be the commander of Central Bureau at the time, at 8th and Irola. And Paul was one of the driving forces where there was an officer from Rampart, an officer from Wilshire to share a storefront there, which really broke the ice, which was so important, to make sure that we are so inclusive. And Paul Kim, you were very inclusive in your efforts there, and as mentioned by the former Chief of Police, now Councilman Bernard Parks, the important role that you have in a community whenever it goes and knocks on your door and says, "Hey, Paul, we have this problem." Now, you're so far away from the heart of the Koreatown community out in Greg's District, I got to get your apartment back there. So, no, I'm just teasing. Congratulations on all your years of service for 25 years, and salute you for all the work that you've done and your wonderful family, and wish you a great retirement and a great new career. Come, Sami Da, Paul Kim.
On behalf of the Police Department, Chief Brennan and Chief Carter, if you all could come up, put you guys on the spot here. Let's welcome two of our distinguished command officers from LAPD, Chief Brennan.
And we have a couple of other council members as well.
Thank you.
After you.
Boy, I get to follow all of these council members. You know, I could, I've known Paul for over 25 years. Let me make a couple of quick comments about Paul Kim, the man, Paul Kim, the police officer. Paul brings to the LAPD a sense of duty and honor that came from his years as an officer in the United States Marine Corps. Those two concepts were key to his personality and his character throughout his career. In addition to that, however, he brought a sense of compassion and empathy to the job that came from his education, his volunteer work off-duty, and other personal activities that brought him to a sense of maturity about how to deal with people that is uncommon among many leaders in law enforcement. But wrapped around all of that is a sense on Paul's part, a part of his personality that suggested that public service really matters, and that people who are committed and conscientious and work hard as public servants can make a difference. Paul was that kind of city employee, that kind of police officer, and that kind of leader. And on behalf of the Police Department, I hope that we have a chance to say this at a regular retirement party, but it is, it gives me great honor to say to Paul in front of all you today, thank you for all of your good work. You will be missed.
Let me call Mr. Reyes at this time, followed by Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to thank my colleagues for acknowledging and recognizing Commander Kim for his great work. In all my years working with the council, a good portion of Koreatown was always part of District 1. Until recently, with redistricting, I lost a good portion of it, but still have a percentage of it. But during that time, I would go to dinners with dignitaries from Koreatown, from Korea, and there'd be Commander Kim representing the city of LA in a very professional, noble way. I want to thank you for all that hard work. And I would go to events that spoke about public safety, community meetings, crisis in the Rampart area. Commander Kim was there supporting the city of LA and the men and women in blue, and being the role model that he has been. So I want to thank you for that, Commander Kim. One of the upsides of having six divisions in one district is to get to meet such great personnel, folks who are so committed to the public safety of the city of LA. But more importantly, the message you send to youth, the folks who are going to be the future of the city, that an individual can overcome cultural language and be able to achieve all the accolades you have achieved, truly is a strong message for our future. I want to thank you for that as well. So good luck in your golden years. I'm sure we haven't seen the last of Commander Kim, Mr. Kim, and look forward to working with you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Ledlow, for doing this presentation today. And Commander Kim, you're leaving a huge hole in the Police Department. It speaks volumes about who you are and what you've been able to contribute, that there really will be that loss. And I want to praise Councilmember Parks because, as Police Chief, he had the wisdom and the foresight to bring somebody up through the ranks, which is so important. And I know people have spoken to this, but I've been with you and other times without you at banquets and dinners in Koreatown, and the immense pride with which people speak about the position that you have had is the kind of thing that there is a Korean child somewhere in the city today who knew that there was a Commander Kim and who's decided that they are going to become a Los Angeles Police Department, Police Officer, and they want to one day perhaps even be the first Korean chief. You have been a trailblazer. You didn't do it alone. There are other people who took you along the way. And I know you'll continue to provide that leadership. So now that you're civilian, and I believe Mr. Ledlow misspoke and said that you were retiring from the Los Angeles City Council, maybe in the 12th District one day, if Mr. Smith will endorse him, we can work this out. You might even be a council member in these very chambers. But congratulations, and thank you for everything you've done for the community. But congratulations and thank you for everything you've done for the communities that I represent and also for the entire Police Department and inspiring this city. Congratulations.
We just want to thank Councilman Garcetti for kicking off the little madness that's back here now. Everybody's talking about his campaign.
Ms. Perry.
Commander, I also wanted to say a few good words about you because I've known you for over well a while and watched you also rise to the ranks and I've always been impressed by your intelligence and your loyalty and your very direct expression of what community means to you and how you served us so well and it's testament by the enormous crowd you have behind you, the impact you've had on all of our lives and you will be missed. But I also think you were a tremendous role model and not just to Koreans or to Asian-Americans, but to all of us here in public service about the importance of being forthright, the importance of being honest and the importance of serving with compassion and with dignity. And I don't know that we'll see many people like you after you're gone, but I hope that we do and I know that your service has inspired all of us and I just want to wish you well and good health and have a good time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we turn the microphone over to now-citizen Kim, we want to have Chief Lee Carter say a few words as well. Chief?
Thank you very much. A lot has been said here about Paul Kim today and I can vouch for every bit of it. His loyalty, his dedication, his commitment. I'll tell you what, Paul, as a partner, I have never had a partner like that before. And he gave so much leadership to his position out in Operations West Bureau and he was so involved in the community, not only on duty and off duty, in everything that he did. I think, Paul, I think now you realize how much it was appreciated by not only all the council people here, but by your peers. And I just want to thank you and they always say that there's a strong person that helps us get through things, the thick and the thin, a touchstone. And I know that in your life, it's your wife, Kaylin.
Now, Commander, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and City Council, it's my distinct honor and privilege to present you with this commendation. One thing that had not been said here today, but I think it's noteworthy, Commander Kim has received over 200 medal awards and commendations, ranging from the governor, state assembly, US senators, mayors of Los Angeles, Los Angeles City Council, Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, president of the Republic of Korea, Seoul Metropolitan Government, Los Angeles County District Attorney, Board of Governors for the California Community College System, Lions Club, Rotary Club, and members from countless other organizations. Your life has been a real tribute to honor and distinction. Congratulations. Please say a few words to us.
With your permission, Mr. President, may I please ask LAPD members and their families to stand, because what little that I was able to do, all that was impossible without them. So ladies and gentlemen, please. The family, come on. Nothing is really important if that tradition that we built is not continued. So my departing remark is to the parents of young men and women out there in the city of Los Angeles and beyond. Please send us your sons and daughters. We will turn them into professional police officers and good, decent human beings that we can all be proud of. So please send us your sons and daughters so that they can be Los Angeles police officers.
Thank you, Commander. Thank you, Mr. President. And if I can, ask for a brief moment to take a photo. There's so many colleagues that would like to join us in this, if we could do a quick photo right here. Thank you, Commander, and thank you, one and all.
After the brief photo, I believe Mr. Varegosa has a presentation. After the photo? Okay. Thank you, colleagues. And I do believe now that was the final presentation for this morning. Madam Clerk, if we have been called to order, then let's proceed with the first item of business, please.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, items noticed for public hearing. Item number one is a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District Nine and I believe there is a card on that.
We have cards on item one. We also have cards on item two. We'll call both of those special to hear from members of the public. We have, that's it for dispatch of items.
Okay. And items three and four are also public hearing items. They're ordinances for street lighting districts.
Okay, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Items three and four, public hearings are open and closed. Do we have any requests for specials? Items three or four, seeing none, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item number five is also a public hearing item and I believe there are also cards on that.
On item number five, we do have one card, but the speaker agrees to not speak if this is moving on consent. So without any opposition, public hearing is open and closed. Members of the council wishing to call item five special, seeing none, let's open the roll on item five, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is done, that is approved. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held. Items six through thirty-four. On item number thirty-three, there are two reports on the file and a motion is required.
Okay, members, items six through thirty-four now before us. Public hearings have been held in committee on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Do we have any requests for specials? And we also need motions on items thirty-three and thirty-four. Mr. Reyes.
It's on item thirty-four, like to receive and file, that be appropriate at this time.
Any objection to receiving and filing item thirty-four? Seeing none, item thirty-four is received and filed. Any other specials on items six through thirty-three? Mr. Parks.
Special on number six and also on twenty-three.
Mr. Parks calls item six special and twenty-three. Any other specials on items six through thirty-three? Let's call item thirty special as well. Any other specials on these items?
And, Mr. President, there still is a motion required on item thirty-three. There are two reports that differ.
Ms. Biskowski.
I move the Budget and Finance Committee report since the money's already been transferred.
Okay, that's a motion on item thirty-three. Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those items are approved.
Mister, fourth with, please, Mr. President.
Which item?
Eighteen, fourth with.
Eighteen.
Item number seven, fourth with.
Fourth with on item seven as well.
And number eight, fourth with.
And eight, fourth with, please. Next items.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items thirty-five through sixty, ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, items thirty-five through sixty are before the city council today and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Do we have requests for specials? Items thirty-five through sixty, Ms. Han. Item thirty-six, call special by Ms. Han. Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next item, item sixty-one is an item for which public hearing has been held.
And members, item sixty-one now before us. Public hearing has been held. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Seeing no such motion. Do we have any requests to call item sixty-one special? By Ms. Han, call special by Ms. Han.
Do we have cards on people that would like to speak on this?
Public hearing has been held on sixty-one. We do have
Do we need to reopen?
Two speaker cards on item sixty-one.
I would move that we reopen public hearing.
Okay, without objection, we'll do so when we get to item sixty-one. Next item, please.
Okay, that would take council back to the items called special and item number one was called special for cards from the public.
Okay, item number one now before us and the council calls forward Lloyd Hong, followed by Francisco Correa, Bertha Hernandez, Pablo Rodriguez, and Geraldine Redding. If you would all please come forward, this is public comment for item number one. Please come forward now. Please form a line at the podium and as you come forward, introduce yourself so we have your name.
First of all, good morning. My name is Geraldine Ford and I'm speaking for Mr. Han. Well, I'm here to represent Mr. Han. I've been living in that neighborhood all my life. I was born and raised there. My address is fourteen seventy-three East Forty-Eighth Place. And, well, all the neighborhood was expecting Mr. Han to get his license and we were surprised that the police was opposed to his permit. Well, and since he first started the store, everyone in the neighborhood has been pleased with him and he's a dedicated friend to the neighborhood and he's like a true leader in the neighborhood. He's always on guard at the store. He's always there to advise and help you if you need it. That goes for the kids, the youngsters in the neighborhood. And me personally, I have three grandsons and they were born there too and he's been helpful with them and being in that neighborhood, there's gang activity there, but he tries to get the kids and help them and talk to them and keep them on the straight and narrow. And they love him, you know. And I don't, we don't understand why Mr. Han should be victimized for the high crime rate in the area. The store stays, only stays open till eight o'clock and most of the crime happens later on in the neighborhood. He's the only store in the neighborhood that you can go to that you can get fresh vegetables and meats and produce. And he and his wife is always, are always there to greet the customers and his employers are very kind and courteous to, you know, to everybody that comes in the store. And if there's anything like minor loitering or fighting, any suspicious people in the neighborhood, we can ask Mr. Han to help and he'll go there with someone from the store. He'll come out and see what's going on and, you know, before we can call the police because the police don't respond to, you know, too quickly in that area.
Ma'am, if I can ask you to conclude, please, we have other speakers waiting.
Oh, okay. Well, I just, you know, please let him have his permit. He's a good guy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Short and sweet, I like that. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Pablo Rodriguez and I grew up in, around the neighborhood. I just live across the street of Mr. Han's Market Store and he provides good customer service. His, we always shop right in front of the store whenever we need something and he keeps his store very clean and he's a very good neighbor. So I wish you guys would like give him the permit and he's a very nice guy. Thanks.
Thank you.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Bertha Hernandez y vivo en la cuarenta y ocho zero tres South Compton Avenida.
Good morning, my name is Bertha Hernandez. I live at forty-two oh three South Compton. It's across the street from the market. I'm here to tell you.
Y vengo a dar el apoyo al señor, al señor Han para que le den el permiso de, en su negocio. Porque sé que lo tiene muy limpio porque yo lo conozco de hace doce años.
I'm here to ask you to please, I'm here to support him and ask you to please give the permit to Mr. Han because I've known him for twelve years. He's a very kind, a helpful person.
Y tiene de todo. Hay carnes frescas, verduras frescas, dulce, todo, todo, todo.
He carries all sorts of merchandise, including fresh meat, fresh vegetables, candies, everything.
Y pues también nos hace falta la cerveza. De vez en cuando nosotros los latinos nos gusta la cerveza.
We also need beer. As Hispanics, once in a while we like to drink a beer.
Hay veces, no estoy diciendo para emborracharse, o sea, nos gusta porque hay veces en la mañana que para la buena digestión, en vez de tomar vino, nos tomamos una cerveza.
Beer is unnecessary to get drunk. Sometimes in the morning, it's good for your digestion. Instead of drinking wine, you drink a beer.
Y quiero que por favor, si, a ver si le dan el permiso y así ya no vamos lejos a comprar las cosas. Ahí las tenemos enfrente porque si vamos a comprar, nos hace falta algo.
So please, I ask you to give him the permit. This way we can go to that store and buy everything. We don't have to go anywhere else to buy it. If we need something, we just go there and purchase it in the same area.
Y también quiero decir que está limpia afuera, está muy iluminado y nunca hay problema.
Also, I want to say that he keeps the area very clean. It's always well lit and I've never seen any problems there.
Y como le repito, yo lo conozco de hace doce años porque tengo doce años viviendo ahí. Y muchas gracias por todo.
Once again, I've known him for twelve years because I've been living in that area for twelve years. Thank you for everything. Gracias.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Francisco Correa. Sirvo como sacerdote en la Iglesia Católica Antigua. Nosotros tenemos una parroquia cerca del negocio de Don Pedro y con el cual nosotros tenemos muy buenas relaciones porque él nos ha ayudado mucho y nosotros hemos colaborado con él. La iglesia queda más o menos a unos dos bloques. Mi nombre es Francisco Correa. Sirvo como sacerdote en la Iglesia Católica Antigua.
My name is Francisco Correa and I'm a priest at the Catholic Church.
What Catholic?
Saint Mary of Guadalupe.
Hemos tenido muy buenas relaciones con Don Pedro en cuanto a la ayuda mutua tanto de la iglesia como de su negocio.
We've had a very good relationship with Mr. Peter. Mutual beneficial relationship from the church to the business and the business to the church.
Y estamos aquí para apoyarlo en la venta de la cerveza ya que no perjudica a la comunidad en cuanto a que puedan ellos tomar en exceso cerca del lugar. Pienso pues de que en cuanto a que puedan ellos tomar en exceso cerca del lugar. Pienso pues de que no es un obstáculo para que él pueda seguir con su negocio.
And we're here to support him in the sale of beer. We don't think it's going to hurt the community. There's people that perhaps will be drinking outside anyway of their community. We don't think it's going to damage that community, and we ask you to please grant that permit so he can continue running his business.
Solo me resta decirle que le agradezco mucho su atención, esperando una respuesta positiva para Don Pedro, para que él pueda continuar sirviendo, como hasta hoy lo ha hecho.
And I just want to end by saying that I hope that you support Mr. Peter also in granting that permit, so he can continue servicing the community and supporting it the way it's been supported in the past. Thank you.
Morning, Mrs. Counsel. It's my pleasure to have a chance to explain my situations. My name is Lloyd Hong. I am applicant of item number one. Me and my wife is working that store for more than seventeen years. My store have a full-service meat department selling fresh produce, milk, egg, tortilla, whatever. Every item is essential for living every day. When I start this store, I didn't have any kind of idea how can make this business grow. All I was sure is America is a land of opportunity. Whoever doing their best, the result should be good. In spite of a lack of English skill and strong accent, me and my wife have been doing more than seventeen years our best. That's the reason my neighbor protect my store during the Los Angeles riot. Most of the store were burned down, except my store in my area. When I received a conditional use appointment from the Jolning Department last month, Sergeant of Police Department called me. Police Department are not opposing my plan. Also, Department Alcohol Beverage Control informed me. They received the same answer from Police Department. Also, my area is not the high concentration, less concentration of sale license area. But I was noticed last week from the city clerk. There is one opposing letter from the Police Department. But I found something wrong that, I don't know if they made the mistake or not, the address they mentioned is not my store. So I tried to contact the Police Department. I couldn't make it. So I was wondering if you let me have a chance to serve, better condition to serve my neighbor, I really appreciate. If you let me have permit, I will humble your decision. I'll take as a big burden, another big burden to my neighbor. Also, if you postpone this case a couple of weeks, which I can have time to contact the Police Department, why they changed their mind or whatever, I can find, follow them. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for item number one. Let me recognize Ms. Perry at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a very difficult case, and it's a difficult case because Mr. Hong is a nice person. He is a very decent person who has obviously forged positive relationships with the community, as evidenced by some of the people who've joined him here today. I have two letters, one on from LAPD dated March fourteenth, and it is an opposition letter, or in the alternative, with conditions. And there are numerous conditions in this letter, should we choose to support this, twenty-seven to be exact. But what concerns me about the letter is that there are a number of conditions in here that are not applicable to this particular situation. Some of them are no pool or billiard tables, no live entertainment, including live music disc jockeys, dancing, things like that. And so I'm concerned that this is more of a form letter to some extent, and may not have had the extensive review that these situations necessitate. But more than that, the amount of churches in the area is a bit overwhelming. I have a second opinion from Bob Janavici dated March the sixteenth, and there are almost nine churches in the immediate area, plus a primary center and an elementary school. One of the largest or greatest complaints I get when I go out in the community is on outlets for wine and beer, and particularly from neighborhood churches where people may walk to church or walk with their families. Now, Mr. Hong has expressed an interest in having some more time to work on this situation, and because he is who he is, I'm willing to do that today if that doesn't compromise his rights under the Caldera Bill, but I am concerned that it might, and I'd like to ask the city attorney if he can give me some indication, I don't know if he can, whether or not there is even a possibility for us to get some more time for Mr. Hong today. Can you stop my time?
I believe so. I think we have ninety days to act, and it's City Council policy to bring these in within the forty-five days, but there is an opportunity to continue this matter.
Okay, thank you very much. What I need Mr. Hong to do is to go back to Newton Division and get some clarity on what is known as a letter of non-opposition, and to specifically review with Newton these conditions, particularly the ones that don't seem to be applicable to your situation, and to seek some clarity on that, and come back, meet with my planning person, and review it. Again, I would also like to request that you meet with representatives of each one of the churches listed in the recommendations dated March sixteen, two thousand five by Robert Janavici. You have father here today from a church that is not on this list, maybe a smaller church in the area, but I think you need to ensure that your outreach has been extensive, particularly to these religious institutions, because there are so many in the immediate area, and the concentration of religious institutions in this area is so great. Okay? And then, I guess we could bring this back, what, in three weeks?
Okay. The new date then would be April nineteenth.
And that would leave us how much more time after that? We're halfway through now. Okay. Okay, all right.
Okay.
Is that acceptable?
So, without objection, then this matter is continued for three weeks. The new hearing date will be April nineteenth, and if the city attorney is okay with it, our public hearing today suffices our public hearing requirement on this matter. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is item number two, and that was also called special for cards from the public, and it is the finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District Three.
Okay, item number two now before us, and the council calls forward David Lichen, followed by Beth Abulafia. Abulafia, if you would come forward, please, on item number two. Go ahead.
Good morning. We would like to request that this matter be continued until tomorrow. We've got some additional information that we'd like a chance to bring forth tomorrow for the council member.
Ms. Zane?
Request that one-day continuance. I think we can get it all resolved, bring it back tomorrow and get it taken care of. Thank you.
Okay, without objection, item is continued for one day. We'll see you here tomorrow. Next item.
Next item is item number five, and that was also called special for cards from the public.
Actually, that card was pulled. The matter, the card was in support. Otherwise, this matter is going forward on a consent. Next item, please.
Next item is item number six, and that was called special by Council Member Parks.
Mr. Parks.
My questions have been answered. Thank you.
Okay. Any other members of the council wishing to be heard on item number six? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved, and I think we can send that matter forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number twenty-three, call special by Council Member Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you have the city attorney come up, please? Colleagues, this is a matter that comes out of our current year's budget, in which the recommendation of the mayor and the city council, we move forward to identify a new revenue stream on our TOT bed tax. And upon the city's finance department moving forward on it, there is a couple of issues as to potential lawsuits, and we'd like to ask Terry Bowers to come up and to explain what the status is, where we are on the issue, so we can get some clarity as to this vote.
Yes, Terry Bowers, Chief Deputy for the City Attorney's Office. I also have Paul Kiesel with me from the outside firm that will be representing the city in this particular lawsuit. In a nutshell, and Paul can comment in more detail, this is a case about the TOT tax, where the dot-com entities like Hotel dot-com, what they do is they charge the tax on the full amount that they charge the consumer for the room. In reality, they're getting the room at a discounted rate, and so when they remit the tax to the city, they only take the percentage from the discounted rate. And that's disguised in a general fee that's labeled fee and tax. So there's no transparency at all, and our finance department has been working for a while to try and resolve this without any success, and so that's what's necessitated filing the litigation. There's been some groups claiming that this will result in a new tax. That's absolutely incorrect. The money is already being collected from the consumer. It's just not appropriately being remitted to the city. So this is substantial revenue that we can recover. What happened was the governor enacted some legislation that restricted the statute of limitation for this type of case to four years. Mr. Kiesel's firm found that out at the end of the year, and so I authorized the filing of the complaint to protect an additional two years of revenue that the city could recover, because our claims will cover a six-year time span instead of a four. And so that's why we went ahead and filed the lawsuit. The potential recovery is approximately sixty million over that six-year period of past revenue, plus not to mention the additional revenue that the city would recover if the proper amount of tax was remitted to the city in the future.
Council Member Parks, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have specifically about the case.
Let me ask you, is there any other lawsuits currently pending on this issue?
Yeah, that's a very good question. What you should know is that as we filed the case on behalf of the city on December thirtieth, saying that the city is owed this money, alternatively, on February seventeenth, the firm of Milberg Weis filed a lawsuit on the other side, saying that the consumers are being overcharged. And so there's now a companion case on the other side of our position, council members, so that if the city were to, say, not pursue it, Milberg Weis would attempt to recover it for the consumers, where I believe it's appropriately city tax revenue that's due.
And then give us idea, what is the timeline that we must file our suit?
Well, actually, let me back up and say that the suit has been filed. It was filed on December thirtieth. If you'd like, I have a packet for each member of the city council, if there's any interest to see it. It lays out, Council Member Parks, it was filed on December thirtieth, so that the statute of limitations would not be lost for the city in recovering back revenue past four years. Where we are right now is we must serve the complaint on the defendants, and we're probably thirty days past that deadline. We're at risk of having the matter dismissed if we don't have approval to proceed forward today.
Okay, so we must do that post haste?
We do.
Okay. And the other issue is that if our lawsuit go forward, we go forward, if the city is then sued by the internet companies, who then defends the city on that issue?
My firm and the firm of Barron &amp; Butt, our co-council, have agreed to fully represent the city, both in any claims that we bring forward in the court, as well as defend the city, at no additional cost to the city for our representation and defense.
Okay, so the other issue from the city attorney's standpoint is that this is somewhat unusual. We talk about a contingency fund, but yet we give a baseline as to the two segments of two hundred fifty thousand dollars, maximum five hundred thousand. How do we configure that? It's somewhat unusual, or have we done that in the past?
Yeah, in this type of litigation, the city wants to be in the forefront of protecting the city and the consumers. So we enter into a contingency arrangement where the firm, since it's proceeding at its risk, is able to retain a certain percentage of the judgment or the settlement that is recovered. In this particular case, these two firms that are representing the city, in most of the cases, will have a contingency fee of around thirty percent. But in order to protect the interests of Los Angeles City, the city attorney's office simply will not enter into an agreement where there is a contingency fee over fifteen percent. And so the arrangement we have with these two firms is a fifteen percent contingency fee of the recovery. Now, to compensate the firm in the initial stages of the litigation, where it's very expensive and you have to move forward, we've also agreed to put forth up to five hundred thousand in costs, with a cap of two hundred and fifty thousand per year. So in any one given year, they couldn't spend more than two hundred and fifty thousand with a total cap of five hundred thousand. Now, that's subject to the approval of the city attorney's office. These all would be costs related to the litigation, experts, depositions, things of this nature, and our office would supervise that very closely. Plus, at the end of the day, if there's an award from the court, for example, the costs would be reimbursed to us by the defendants in the lawsuit. So we would recover the costs that we put out front. Additionally, if there is a settlement in the lawsuit, then we would take into account the costs that the city paid up front and incorporate that into any settlement amount that we would recover from the defendants. So even though there's this initial outlay of costs, our anticipation is that we would recover that either through the settlement or through the court-ordered judgment.
Okay. The, let me see. Let me ask you one other thing, is that what did we think as far as the timing on this? Is this going to be over a several-year period, or is this going to come to a conclusion fairly rapidly?
It's always my hope that litigation comes to a close rapidly, especially when I work on a contingent fee basis. I would think it's fair to assume that the lifespan of this case is somewhere between twenty-four and forty-eight months, depending on how the court case proceeds. My best estimate is twenty-four to forty-eight months.
Mr. Bowers, I talked to you earlier. Has a, I know we're looking at this on the theory of law and the sense of, for the city's benefit, but has any of the other organizations or trade organizations come forward and supported our position?
Since we initiated the lawsuit, there has actually been considerable national interest in this, because people are concerned, at the very least, with the transparency issue where the dot-coms are combining the fee and the tax. In fact, I picked up, I get this author fromers magazine, Budget Travel, and they have an article in this month's issue regarding our office filing the lawsuit and how there's a need for the transparency. The International Association of Convention and Visitor Bureaus in Washington, D.C., has come out publicly and is very much in favor of this type of litigation by various cities and municipalities. Their theory is that when we recover these revenues, it can go back into the infrastructure of the city to support conventions, support tourism, and so they're very much in favor. And we have copies of this, if any council member would like to have a copy.
Okay, thank you very much. Colleagues, I would recommend that we move forward on this issue to get this served. I think it's in the best interest of the city that we move forward. There's a couple of things I'd like to add to the report. On a verbal motion that we codify the statement about the cost, that two hundred fifty thousand per year as a max of five hundred thousand on this transaction, that we also add to the report on a verbal motion that the outside firm is going to defend the city if there's other additional litigation as stated today. But we'd also add that in a couple of months, two months, that we ask that the city attorney and outside firm come back to budget and finance, and hopefully, Martin, if we can get a joint meeting with conventions, and we can meet together and discuss this, not only on the status of the case, only on the status of the case, but any policy issues that may come forward in the litigation. But we ask those three items be added as we move forward.
There's a second. Ms. Siskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I thank Mr. Parks for bringing this forward, and the city attorney coming. This was something that had been presented in Budget and Finance Committee, and my concern, we were having some of this discussion today in public session, normally we have it in private session, but I think as our outside attorney has passed around the filing, he said that it's a public filing, a document that was filed in court, so it is public, so we are free to discuss that. The question I had is, I think when you presented this to committee, there was indication that other cities were interested, and I don't know if they have filed separately, or if they've joined together with us in some kind of an amicus action, just to show the depth and breadth of interest. Can you tell me what's the status of others participating?
I could. I will tell you that this is an issue that has national implications, that other cities, and I identified in closed session some of those cities that have been in contact with us, and I won't name them individually, but I will say that there are cities throughout the country, from coast to coast, who have spoken with us, who are interested in pursuing this. And councilmember Parks, to the extent that other cities do join in, then the costs will concomitantly go down as other cities are able to assist in our ongoing litigation.
And what is the timing for which those other cities might join? I mean, indicated we're sort of at a point where we need to move quickly, so we will move post haste. But is it open-ended that other cities can join in either on their own, or is it amicus with us?
That's correct. I mean, I think some cities are watching and waiting to see Los Angeles is moving forward. I, quite frankly, have done nothing to foster additional contacts until after the city of Los Angeles, my client, asked us to move forward. Now that that's been done, hopefully today, we will aggressively begin the national campaign.
Well, let me just suggest that both through our council president and perhaps the CLA, that we, perhaps with the city attorney's office, alert and notify some of the other cities, as you say, what we have done. There is interest in this, and perhaps either through the California League of Cities, or perhaps the National League of Cities, there might be interest in participating in this. I think it was something that was discussed recently at the conference we had in Washington, and there may be others. But I think knowing that and creating a broader depth and breadth of interest and support would be worthwhile and useful. But I agree with councilmember Parks, and I think it was the unanimous recommendation of the Budget and Finance Committee when we last heard that this is something we did want to move forward with. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Siskowski, and I believe Mr. Bowers is already moving forward on the League of Cities front. Mr. Zine.
I had a question regarding other municipalities. That's already been discussed, so thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Just to ask a question here. The internet is the wave of the future. And on the internet right now, if you go on Travelocity.com, it says that the hotel at Fourth and Figueroa costs X dollars, if you go on that rate right then. And let's say it costs $100, okay? But if I walked in there off of the street and went to the front desk, it costs $150 for the same room. Is that kind of what works?
Potentially, but not necessarily. Sometimes the hotels actually sell the rooms for the same price as the online booking facilities, but people are now used to going to Expedia or Travelocity, and if they were to do that, they might find the same price, they might find some variations.
Okay, but the concern that the city attorney has, and it is outside counsel, is is the hotel occupancy tax charge?
If I could, councilmember, let me show you a very powerful example. If you could look in the packet I provided to you, and you go to, I don't have a tab, but about halfway through--
City of Commerce or the--
Yeah, City of Commerce. Look at City of Commerce for one moment, because it's extremely instructive. What you'll see is that the City of Commerce has no hot tax. They don't have an occupancy tax. And yet hotels collect $5.50. They identify it as a tax and a service fee.
But we're not Commerce, so let's go to Los Angeles.
Right.
It's the next page.
Correct. So what you see here is, and it's important to look at that, Los Angeles, they are collecting for Los Angeles 14% from the consumers. They're actually collecting 100% of the city's hot tax that's being collected, in addition to the service fee. That tax that they're collecting from the consumer is being withheld from the city, and it's being kept by the online service provider as profit.
Are they paying any tax at all?
If they're paying a tax, what they're doing is they're paying a tax, as they've admitted in their SEC filings, on the discounted rate, the wholesale rate that they're paying to the hotel. So they're keeping the difference between what they're charging the consumer in the occupancy tax and what they're paying to the city. It's probably about a 40% loss to the city in each transaction.
But our hotel tax is 18%?
14%.
14%, so that's $14 on a $100 room.
That's right.
But see, here's what they do.
Okay, so let me just go, I get my thinking right. So if the room's $50, but it's even, they, if they, Travelocity is one of the groups that you're interested in?
Correct.
If they buy all the rooms for $50, and they sell them for $60, is the hotel tax 14% of 60, or 14% of what it's on the back of the door?
The way the City of Los Angeles ordinance reads, it is on the occupants' payment. It's 14% of $60 is the amount that must be collected in occupancy tax. The hotel would have to collect 60. The online services have to collect the fee on $60.
Right. Well, that seems fair, right?
That certainly does.
Right. Okay, that's what, and I want to look to the chair, because I'm glad this is going to committee, because Mr. City Attorney, Chief Deputy City Attorney, I think it's a very important issue, but I think we got to talk about it. Because I think one thing in the future is the internet, which I'm still learning how to spell it, is the fact that people are traveling with spontaneity, and the internet allows them that. And people will come to Los Angeles and fill our hotel rooms if they find a deal on the internet. Now, we have to pay for the taxes, so your eyes are browning there, Terry.
Can I make two points, councilman? One is, it's not an additional tax. The money's already being collected. And if you look at it in one way, the dot coms are keeping this extra float on the tax, because they're only giving us the tax at the lower discounted rate of the room. They're keeping that extra tax as part of their profit, but it's our revenue. By keeping that--
Well, I don't--
Wait, wait, let me just finish.
Wait a second, wait. This is the city council, not the city attorney. You can finish in a minute, Terry. I just want to say, there's $60, and there's a tax on the $60, which I support. Now, I don't think a company should be having a phony tax or a phony fee, but I think it's okay to try to stimulate movement of people to our city, to our region. And with the internet, if they find a deal, let that deal be there.
No, and we agree. And what the point I wanted to make is, by them keeping this extra tax, it goes into their overall profit margin, which allows them to offer the Commerce Room at a lower fee rate. So in essence, LA is subsidizing the rooms in other cities.
I don't know, we have an example of Commerce in here, that's not the City of Los Angeles, so I don't equate that at all. So I want to look at the City of Los Angeles, and how the City of Los Angeles, from San Pedro to Chatsworth--
Sure.
--on that issue.
Can I, let me just say this, and it's an important point, and I want to be clear here. We do not want to do anything to prohibit tourism, or to reduce the flow of folks visiting our city. All we want to do is make sure that the tax that is appropriately paid to the city, and is due the city, is paid to the city. There's no doubt they're collecting the occupancy tax on the full amount of the room, but they're not paying the city that full amount. Now, maybe legally, they don't have to. I disagree. I think they are legally obligated--
Because the way our ordinance is written?
Potentially, the way the ordinance is written, they've got a number of constitutional challenges that they're going to make to this piece of litigation, because it's not just Los Angeles. It's nationally. Every jurisdiction, if I went to Chicago or New York, and it was 18% and 12% and 6%, they charge the 6%, and then they add $5.50 or $6 for the service fee. They do it throughout America. They collect 100% of the tax, but they don't remit to the cities that tax they're collecting. So they're either cheating the cities, or they're cheating the consumers, because it's not their money to keep. That's really the point of what we're trying to accomplish here.
I may have other questions, and I may come to committee if I could, Mr. Chair, because I'm interested to keep it free for people to have a spontaneity, because that's what a lot of people are doing. But at the same time, if it's a $100 room, they should pay that $14 to the City of Los Angeles, to go for the needs of promoting Los Angeles, et cetera, et cetera. But also, you know, is there a lot of other, and maybe Mr. Garcetti could help me, because he's the most advanced man on the internet that I know, extra fees on the internet now that we, not just this issue, but other issues? Are you familiar? Is this an issue we should look at throughout? Who governs that? Yes, he says. Okay, federal. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. President, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Chair of the conventions. We look forward to this discussion.
And Mr. Labange, I think Mr. Garcetti will join me in sharing with you that the internet is knowledge, is power.
I'd just like to respond to Tom. Tom, I think the big issue that, to clarify this, is that this is really, from the city attorney's standpoint, the city's standpoint, is a tax on the tourists, not the hotel. And I think it clarifies it in the sense of who is responsible, and that's their position legally, and that's the position of the convention. So it doesn't cut down the flexibility of the internet and how you go get access to it. It's a matter of who's responsible for the tax. And the city's position is that it's an individual tax on the tourists, not the hotel.
You know, just as an aside, Councilman Labange, what's happening is some consumers are seeing these extra fees and taxes, and not being able to discern exactly what they are. And so there is a developing trend where you go straight to the hotel, and they have their own website. So it's very competitive and very spontaneous, and as more websites develop for the individual hotels, that's even better for the consumer and the tourist.
Mr. Ludlow.
Just very briefly, I think there's been a lot of discussion. Just if you could summarize so that we're all clear on what the item is for today.
The item for today, I believe, is to retain our firm to represent the city as special counsel in pursuing this action on behalf of the city to recover the hotel occupancy tax, which has been unpaid for at least the last six years, and continues to be unpaid in the future, on behalf of the city.
Simply put, it's to retain outside counsel, right?
Thank you.
Retain outside counsel and proceed with the litigation.
Other members of the council wishing to be heard at this time? Saying none. Let's open the roll on the item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, members.
Next item, please.
Item number 30 was called special for Councilmember Cardenas.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Members, I just wanted to remind us all that we do depend here locally on putting programs on the street to help our youth, to keep our parks open, to do all these wonderful things that, as Americans, we expected our government to do. One of the things that we need to make sure that we do as well is to remind the state legislature, the governor, also Congress and the president, that we need juvenile justice prevention funds, and we need them to keep coming. I was able to be successful in getting the state of California to get over $100 million a year throughout the state of California for intervention and prevention programs. And what's happening right now, currently, the governor's budget says, we're not going to do that anymore. In addition to that, we have U.S. Senator Dianne Feinstein from California putting through national legislation that has to do more with suppression of gangs and things of that nature, which is a component that needs to happen, but it is really poor on the element of whether or not they're going to be involved in prevention and intervention. Let me give you one example why this is very important to you, the taxpayer, and that is this. If and when we can access a 15-year-old juvenile, and they get involved in a crime, and we can put them into a program and divert them from living the life of crime, what we're able to save the taxpayer is in excess of over $2 million on that individual's life. Because if you follow the individual, and they end up living a life of crime, say they steal a purse, and they go in front of a judge, and we give them some time, they come back out in a couple of years or a few months, then they go back in for maybe a rape, and then they go in for about four or five years, and then before you know it, as a society, we feel as though we've accomplished something. By the time they're 27 years old, we put them away for life because they held up a liquor store with a gun, because of our tough laws. Well, guess what? While they were juveniles, we were spending over $42,000 a year to incarcerate them, and then as adults, we're spending over $32,000 a year to incarcerate them for life. Basically, what we've done is we've robbed our children's future. I'm not talking about the person we put away. We've robbed our children's future, future taxpayers and current taxpayers, of over $2 million to keep that person behind bars. What these juvenile justice programs have proven to do here in California, sometimes for as little as $500, or maybe even $1,500 per youth, we've been able to turn around 40% to 60% of those youth who never commit a crime again. That's smart on crime. That's justice. That's good for the Howard Jarvis folks. That's good for the liberals. That's good for the conservatives. It's good for the taxpayers. It's good for those young people, who we get them involved in good things instead of bad things. And it's even better for the non-victims that are a result of these people not committing crimes anymore. We need these programs. The City of Los Angeles has been a part of over $20 million a year from these programs. We're about to lose that. Ladies and gentlemen, if you want to keep crime down, we need to keep these programs in place. And if Sacramento and Washington don't help us, we can't do it.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise in support of this item. Colleagues, this past weekend, I had the opportunity to hear our colleague, Mr. Cardenas, speak at, as he was a recipient of an award at the Spirit of Peace Awards that were organized by Khalid Shaw and Stop the Violence, Increase the Peace Foundation. And just an amazing night of people talking about the Schiff-Cardenas funding, and how important it is to send a message to the administration in Sacramento, that we need to keep this funding intact, that this funding has played a vital role in beginning to give community-based organizations a sense of direction with their program, that they could be backed financially by the state of California through the probation, excuse me, through the counties, various counties across the state of California. And so what has been said before can't be said any better. But obviously, this is very important work. It was a monumental philosophical shift in the way state criminal justice funding was historically earmarked. Prior to the Cardenas Schiff bill, funding in this kind would have gone to prison construction. And through the leadership of our colleague, this really did begin a new day in looking at creative ways to fight crime, fighting it on the front end rather than the back end. And so I just wanted to rise and say thank you again, Tony, for all of your work at the state level, and your continued vigilance here at the local level, and obviously urge an eye vote on this on behalf of each one of us in our respective districts that are trying to find smart ways to fight crime. Thank you, Tony.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Ludlow, for those words. I wanted to echo them as well to Mr. Cardenas. I know that when my father was district attorney, that he was one of the first district attorneys to focus on juvenile crime, and he always pointed out to the efforts that you were working on. And I know he went up to Sacramento many times and testified on it. Having seen many of his friends where he grew up, Washington High School, many of them turned into kind of lives of crime, and seeing that, I think, personally affected him a lot as a young man, and something that he wanted to make a difference in. And when Mr. Ludlow speaks about the crime prevention and some of the gang intervention programs that he's leading the way on the new ad hoc committee, you know, we each have experiences, I think, in our own areas of where we can improve programs, but certainly some of the existing programs that we have out there, when you look at that it costs us a third or a quarter as much to intervene just in the personnel, as opposed to deploying a police officer, to have a gang intervention expert, that's the short-term cost. The long-term cost, Mr. Cardenas, you already spoke to, but when we look at, when people editorialize about why we're in a fiscal crisis, why local governments don't have a lot of money to spend, it's because we didn't do any of this stuff up front. And it's very, very, very penny wise, pound foolish for us to even be considering this at the state level, of rolling this back. This should be made permanent. It shouldn't even have to come up for renewal. Any way that we can incorporate that into our legislative program, I think we'd be well served.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, the CLEAR program has been a very effective program in our city. In my district alone, in Highland Park, crime has gone down as far as 50%. One of the key components is the county probation program. These are the kinds of funds that support those types of efforts. So I strongly encourage that we be as proactive as possible in making sure these funds continue to come in. Without the county probation, the key component to the CLEAR program identifies the folks who have gone out of jail, who have been tracked, if you will, because of their violence, and literally brings down a certain level of activity that truly puts our neighborhoods in hostage. The other key component that I just wanted to share with you is, throughout the hearings in the Gang Intervention Committee headed by Councilmember Ludlow-- in the Gang Intervention Committee headed by Councilman Ludlow, the youth that have been coming to us keep talking about, how do you support us with jobs? How do you support us with guidance? How do you support us with the kind of systems because of the failure of our school district, given the high level of dropout rates, the lack of jobs that are essentially plaguing our youth, drives them into a whole other culture that is very destructive, not only for themselves as individuals, but for our communities? So again, how these funds come through is very critical, and I just wanted to make those observations and keep emphasizing that we cannot continue to demonize our youth. We have to find ways to support them in these kinds of programs. And I want to thank Councilcardenas for his leadership at the state level for allowing us to be able to talk about programs like this, because without that leadership, this wouldn't have happened. But the message from me to the young people is, this body is not about just trying to put people in prison, trying to punish them. It's about supporting them, finding them jobs, alternatives, fill that idle time, create that diversion, so they can be more productive. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, colleagues. It's obvious that we see how valuable these programs are and how effective they are, and how they just make so much sense in trying to divert and avert these kinds of things happening into the future. But one of the things I wanted to point out is, we can't take it for granted that these programs that we've had for the last four or five years are going to continue. The only way we can do that is if Washington and Sacramento engage with us and give us the resources to do so. We have a lot of wonderful organizations out there doing wonderful work, turning these kids around, making our streets safer, making kids who are involved in the wrong things, getting them involved in the right things. That's the American way to do things. We always talk about this country, about giving people a second chance. And one thing I want to point out, this has absolutely nothing to do with weakening laws. This is not soft on crime. If you look at it, it has nothing to do with a judge saying, we're not going, now that you're convicted, we're not going to sentence you. It has nothing to do with that. I want to make it very clear. It has everything to do with a judge saying, this kid belongs in a program. This kid can be turned around. I don't want to see this kid in my court again. So what I'm going to do as a judge, I'm going to sentence them to be in a program, and they're going to turn around, and I'm not going to have to deal with this kid again. Because judges should not have to see the same kid four and five times and then eventually put them away for life. That's what's happening in America. That's what's happening in Los Angeles, no exception. These are the kinds of programs that save us tax dollars, they save lives, and they turn lives around. Thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 36 called special by Councilmember Han.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there someone here from LAPD to answer some questions? Colleagues, I asked for a status report from the LAPD on our rewards for members of our communities who are providing information about people who are illegally dumping in our community. As you know, that's a huge problem, is the illegal dumping. It tends to center in certain parts of our city that are already plagued by crime and by blight, and the city spends a lot of resources in removing illegal dumping. I think there was 120 cubic yards of dumping just in one area of my district in a very short time that was removed by city crews. We've tried everything. We put cameras up. So as you know, we agreed on the council, not only for graffiti, but also for illegal dumping, that if community members saw someone, got a license plate number, and reported it to the police, and if it was followed up on, and it led to an arrest and a conviction, that members of our communities would be eligible for a $1,000 reward. We thought that might help people help us catch some of these dumpers. I asked for a status report because I had heard from some of my community members who felt like they were doing what they had asked to be done. They actually were doing some surveillance on their own. They actually turned in some license plate numbers of dumpers, and then felt like it didn't really go anywhere with the police department. So I was just going to ask, maybe you could touch on a couple of things. One, you know, do you think people know about this reward? When they walk into a police station, are the front desk sergeants educated to understand this? And one of the questions I was going to ask, do you think our 3-1-1 operators are aware and are having conversations with the police department? For instance, if someone calls us into 3-1-1, how does that get to you? How do we get people these rewards? And you might want to touch on, is this a priority for the police department? Is this something that we're actually using our limited resources to follow up on? I appreciate answers to all of that.
First off, I'm Captain Sharon Buck. I'm the commanding officer of Juvenile Division. And Juvenile Division happens to facilitate the illegal graffiti rewards, so we also took on the illegal dumping reward. In terms of knowledge, I can only certainly speak for my observations of what the police department has done and what I have done in terms of getting the message out. I think back when we did a report, it was in 2004. Since then, we have made some moves as far as knowledge on the police department. That is on our Intranet within the department. We put it on the LAN system so that every officer that logs on sees it, sees that they should share this with their community, their senior lead officers should be out telling the community members. We teach it at all the schools, supervisors first, the juvenile procedure schools, every school that we can facilitate in terms of Juvenile Division in getting the message out. So certainly, we've done what we can. I can't guarantee, and there could probably be more work. I think in terms of the community, when the illegal graffiti rewards started, the program was facilitated, as you know, probably the Board of Public Works through Operation Clean Sweep. We worked closely with them in not only the reward, but some of the marketing. Now, I know it took some money from that department, but they put together some significant posters, bumper stickers, pins, things that we in Juvenile Division helped facilitate going to the schools and to the community, and putting these posters up everywhere. And so, I mean, my personal recommendation would be that we need to do something like that with the illegal dumping. In terms of facilitating the rewards, all the person has to do is make the observation, and there has to be a conviction. And we try and communicate in Juvenile Division, when the paperwork gets to us through the division, that that person is notified in the process of where it's at, whether there's a conviction, there's going to be a reward issued. The 3-1-1 operators, that I'm not sure about. I'd have to test that and see what their knowledge is in terms of working with us. But Juvenile Division personnel, oh, Juvenile Division personnel in facilitating the rewards can only do what we can and when we get the rewards.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think that's all.
Well, I mean, I think you make a good recommendation in terms of outreach, and I don't know if this would be Public Works, although I think it might be.
I think it is.
Because certainly, our Bureau of Street Services and the Lot Cleaning Division is certainly under Public Works. So maybe we make a recommendation, maybe that's what I make today, that Public Works actually takes on this like they did graffiti.
Even a poster we can put in every area's division in the community.
And could I ask you to maybe follow up with 3-1-1 operators?
Sure.
To make sure that they understand this and that they have a person to contact, probably you, if they get those calls on 3-1-1.
Yes, absolutely.
So thank you. I just, I want this to work better. I've heard enough from some community members who felt frustrated that they were doing their part and somehow didn't feel like it was happening on the other end, either with the police department or with the paperwork or something. So I want to make this work. I think we need the community's help in solving this problem, and I certainly think it's money well spent to give rewards if we can actually stop some of these people from really creating a terrible situation in parts of our city that are already under siege in a number of areas. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. Captain? What's the coordination or what level of dialogue is there between the work you're doing and Public Works in identifying these hotspots? I know in my district, we have already mapped out where the dumping is occurring, and we're trying to keep vigilant, pick it up as soon as it's dumped so it doesn't get worse, because once it lands on the ground, it's like a magnet, others start piling on. What level of coordination is there between your department and Public Works in picking it up and that kind of effort?
Well, I understand the problem, and I know that certain areas are particularly impacted. Juvenile Division only facilitates the paperwork. In terms of priority and resources, it's up to each area commanding officers in terms of resources and putting the resources out there to prioritize. So I couldn't speak for each area, but we in Juvenile Division in coordinating with Public Works, we really don't, because all we do is facilitate the reward application.
So, okay, so you're doing the administrative process?
Absolutely.
Okay, so then we need to do some work in this body to figure out how we can coordinate with LAPD and Public Works, so these are the two entities in the city that are dealing directly, physically dealing directly with the issue.
Absolutely.
And that hasn't happened?
No.
Not that you're aware of?
No. And, you know, we've seen two rewards been given out back in 2003 for $1,000 each. Those particular community members that came forward were aware of the program. And again, I think it goes back to just knowledge. You get the community involved in knowing that when they see that person illegally dumping something, causing what it does to a neighborhood, that all they have to do is call the police and report it, and hope that the person can get arrested, we do a follow-up, and there's an arrest and a conviction, which is simple, as long as we get the information. And again, getting the community involved requires knowledge. And they're just coming on board with the illegal graffiti, and we're seeing increases in those rewards. But the $1,000 is certainly an incentive to get them involved.
It's been about two years now that we've passed this?
The illegal dumping, I think it's three or four.
Three or four years, okay. Perhaps in speaking to you, maybe I can figure out, or working with Chief Bratton, maybe the head of Public Works, to talk about how we coordinate this, because we're talking about a lot of money being spent on that one issue, which is a huge detriment to our communities because of all of the attractive nuisances that are created because of it. And you're just confirming my thought process that perhaps we need to take this to another level, how we coordinate with Public Works and the LAPD, since you have two city families working on this issue, and how we start systemizing. Because the dumping occurs in very regular places. I hate to say that, but the dumpers know where they're going to go, where it's going to land, and who's not watching. And there's intimidation factors, the local people, and they're scared to report it. So there's a whole system issue here I think we need to focus on as a body, as a council. But I think you just confirmed certain points that, but thank you for your hard work. And right after this, maybe we can talk a little bit about who I can best speak to about this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Han.
Councilman Reyes, you bring up a very good point, and we know certain areas, I know certain areas in my district, particularly in Watts, where it happens regularly. I think the other message, I don't know if I made it clear enough, but I, you know, I think the more we promote this, the more we educate the community, the more we put posters and signs, then there is going to be this point of trust, and there'll be nothing worse than if we get the community involved, and we have instances where LAPD does not follow up or does not make it a priority. So I think that needs to be, we need to sit down and meet to make sure that if someone does take the time and effort, I guarantee you, it's probably at 2:00 in the morning or 3:00 in the morning, because that's when the dumping is taking place. It's not in the afternoon. So if somebody is taking the time, wanting to improve their neighborhood, risking something, you know, I tell people, you know, don't try to stop it, just get the license plate and turn it in. But then there has to be a level of commitment from our LAPD officers that if they get that information, they indeed will follow up on it and do the best they can to try to make an arrest and a conviction. Otherwise, you have a community that will feel frustrated and slightly betrayed that they've gone to that effort and haven't had the partnership that they want. And that's really what community-based policing is all about. That's what our senior lead officers are all about, taking, you know, a quality-of-life crime in a particular neighborhood, working with the community, and ultimately bringing all resources to bear to solve that problem. So I think if the community is going to step up, we really need the commitment from LAPD to do the same.
I absolutely agree. And if that has been a problem, then definitely my division and my people would get involved with that area commanding officer, because that is hypocritical to the program and to the purpose of it. So absolutely, I agree.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han, for this here. In my district, adjacent to a freeway out by the Los Angeles River, there's an illegal dump site, and one we really curbed it, and the city attorney did prosecute, is the video camera they put on a streetlight on that particular location was extremely helpful in that area. But I know it's all key, because it all leads to the neighborhood challenges, which when you have a dump there on the street, it's something that does lead to other problems. I just want to thank you, Captain Buck, thank you for your efforts in this, and thank you again.
Other members of the council wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 61 called special by Councilmember Han.
Okay, and I believe you, Ms. Han, had requested that we reopen the public hearing for this item.
Right, let's do that.
So let me call forward Victor Franco Jr., followed by Cheyenne Cook and James Elmandorf on item 61. If you would form a line at the podium, we very much appreciate it.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Victor Franco Jr. with Central City Association. CCA is not here to directly oppose or support unions or the idea of union labor. Labor unions are part of the fabric of America. I have personal experience with organized labor, having been a teamster while working my way through college. But we all agree that labor unrest is bad for the city and its role in discouraging bookings in L.A. hotels and at the convention center. We are concerned about the city utilizing its land use authority to push an issue that is a business decision for hotels and for labor unions. The city should be more concerned on what it can do to make things easier to book conventions and increase tourism, not to use as a condition of approval for land use measures that enhance or detract from the bargaining positions of a hotelier or labor union. Another concern here is, where are we going from here? Are we now going to consider restaurants, cafes, and rental car operations for signing these types of agreements? And if we do, what type of enforcement measures is the city going to utilize? At the end of the day, and whether it is unintended or not, the city is making a statement that it prefers union to non-union shops. If employees want to organize in their work environment, they have that right. And as businesspeople, we would support that right to organize. We need to remember, and maybe this needs to be demystified a little bit, but non-union labor is just as good as, just as good, non-union employees perform the same tasks and duties that other employees perform, and believe it or not, they are just as happy as their counterparts in union operations. Again, we are not here to debate whether or not union or non-union labor is best, but rather, should the city enter into territory normally tracked by business and labor interests specifically? We respectfully request your opposition to this motion before you hear you today.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council President and fellow council members. My name is Cheyenne Cook, and I'm here on behalf of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. I'd just like to echo everything that Victor said in a request that you proceed with caution and perhaps look into these concerns with further review. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is James Elmandorf. I'm from the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy. I just make a couple of quick comments about this proposed ordinance. First, contrary to what the previous speaker said, this is clearly not about union or non-union. What this proposal is about is actually about the city protecting its proprietary interest and protecting the revenue that it can earn from properties that are on city land. There are just a couple of hotels where that's the case. And what this policy would do, and it's similar to things that have happened in San Francisco, Pittsburgh, Washington, D.C., and locally in Santa Monica, would simply say that a hotel has to make sure that there's no labor disruption that would impact the revenue that it earns, which in turn impacts the revenue that the city earns. It does not mandate anything in terms of whether it's union or non-union. It has nothing to do with that kind of policy at all, and indeed, the city could not make that kind of policy. It will also have to go through several other steps of review for some of the proprietary departments, including the Lawa and CRA, since several of the properties are on those land. But we're here definitely to say this is a great step for the city, and I hope everyone will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes public comment for item 61. Councilmember Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually think what we're doing here is historic and actually is the right I actually think what we're doing here is historic and actually is the right thing for us to do. This is about creating labor peace on hotels that are on city land. And this is about us protecting revenues from those hotels on city land that we depend on. This is not about unionizing workers or not using, unionizing workers. What labor peace says is this, that the hotel management and the workers agree together that there will not be a work stoppage, there will not be a lockout, and there will not be a strike. We know that when we have labor strife in the city, that it is detrimental. It is detrimental to business. It is detrimental to people coming to Los Angeles and staying in our hotels. This is about upfront, when a hotel either renegotiates its lease with us or enters into a new lease with us, that they have a labor peace agreement. It really is a great idea for hotels only on city property. That's what it's about. It's not bringing in everybody, it's not restaurants and car rental agencies. It's about us protecting our revenue on city-owned property. I think it's good for both sides. It is good for hotel management, it is good for workers. It brings a confidence, a peace, a safe zone, if you will, for us to operate our hotels in the city of Los Angeles. I'm very pleased to say, even though this does not apply to proprietary departments right now, I am pleased to say that in the Harbor area, for the first time, we will probably have a hotel that upfront has agreed to labor peace ordinance in the Marina area of San Pedro. And one of the things I want to do is urge us to do this today. I think it is important. I think it will provide the kind of stability that businesses really want in the city of Los Angeles, and it will provide stability for our workers who work in the hotels on city property. But I would add to this as a verbal amendment, that we send our recommendation, our high recommendation, to our proprietary department's commissions, that they too adopt this ordinance for hotels that are built on proprietary department land, and I hope you all support this today. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
I just would like to ask a question. In reading this, I just wondered, is that legal that we could specifically lay out an anti-demonstration or policy on specific hotels and not others?
Josh Bertulla from the City Attorney's Office. Yes, in this case, the city would be acting in their proprietary interest as a market participant, and therefore would only be asking for labor peace provisions in those cases where the city owned the property that's being leased to the hotels. So in those cases, we are not asking for the specific language of that labor peace, just that the operator and the unions agree that there will be no lockout and no strike, as the councilwoman has said, so that it does not affect the lease payments to the city.
Okay, but what I'm wondering about, I always thought those demonstrations were voluntary, and they kind of did them when they chose to, as it relates to their property interest. So if we're saying on city hotels, no, are we then putting ourselves in a bind on non-owns hotels to where we're saying that's where you go and demonstrate, and that's where you go and basically can close them down?
No. In fact, specifically, what we've said is that a labor peace agreement between those two parties needs to be in place. We have not said, for instance, exactly what that language of that labor peace needs to be. In addition, under the National Labor Relations Act, we have the ability, again, as a market participant, to set that in, it's actually a contractual provision, and that's the only exception the court has found for the NLRA, is a city acting in a proprietary manner.
So that's why we could not say that to hotels in general?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused for today's meeting to leave at 11:00 a.m. and also for tomorrow's to leave at 11:30 for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Zain moves. Ms. Perry is excused.
Councilmember Ludlow requests to be excused to leave early also from today's meeting, and a motion is required.
Okay. Mr. Carranza moves. Mr. Ludlow will be excused.
Council President Pede requests to be excused Wednesday, March 30th, to leave at 11:00 a.m. for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Smith moves. That excuse is granted.
Councilmember Viera Regosa requests to be excused Friday, April 1st, to leave at 11:30 for personal business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Viera Regosa is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Mr. Parks for an introduction.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and colleagues. I'd like to introduce you to a young man I met just this weekend, participated in a program at the Artree Museum, in which there was a panel discussion about 40 years after the Watts riot. We have here today a council member from Logan City in the country of Australia, and that's Aidan McLendon, and I'd ask him to come up and maybe just say something to the body.
Thank you, President. Councilmembers, and in particular, Councilmember Parks, for your very warm welcome. I come from a city called Logan City, which is just south of Brisbane in Queensland, Australia. And we are just a smaller city, slightly smaller than L.A., 200,000 people. I was elected to our government about 12 months ago now, as the youngest person in Queensland there to represent the youth in politics. I ran my first election when I was 17 years old for the state seat and missed out, and at the moment, I'm on a two-week tour with my band, Kill TV, with my guitarist and bass player in the public gallery. And our mission is to combine politics and music to bring an avenue for the youth, to give them hope, to make them more politically astute, and to encourage them to become active in their local communities. So I'd like, thank you for having me here today, and I find it very interesting that you are televised your meetings live. I'd like to say it in Australia, because sometimes the media can put a different spin on it. But I'd like to thank you all here, and once again, it's a great council, and I'm sure you're all doing your best in the good faith that people put you in here. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Welcome to Los Angeles, and since you have your band, maybe you can help us with some theme music for our meetings? That'd be helpful. And actually, we should introduce you to the organizers from Rock the Vote, so come back and visit again.
I'll come back, no worries, for sure. Actually, we're planning a tour very shortly, and in about four or five months, we're recording with Westlake Audio. We just released our last EP.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, for that introduction. Colleagues, do we have any announcements today? Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was this morning with the mayor and with Walter Mosley, who we honored down at City Council not too long ago, as we announced our One Book, One City. The book that we've, that the mayor has chosen is Walter Mosley's Little Scarlet, and I'm on chapter seven. It's very, it's a whodunit, but it's centered, as many of his are, in Los Angeles, and it was centered in Los Angeles immediately following the Watts riots, which were coming up on the 40th anniversary of the Watts riots in 1965. So it speaks a lot of the plight of African-American Angelinos at that time, and I think a lot of the book clubs and the discussions that will be happening around the city will probably go beyond just this story, and it'll be an opportunity for us in Los Angeles to look at the things that have changed, but the places where we could probably all do a lot more work to make things better in Los Angeles. So it's a great book. Pick it up and be part of the One City, One Book.
Read, read, read. Read it with your kids. Any other announcements? Mr. Smith?
Just to remind all those in the building today or across the street, City Hall East, that the American Red Cross is back. Go over and give blood here in the third or fourth floor media room at City Hall, and they'll be here tomorrow, I believe, also, so please give blood, American Red Cross, very important, very needed. And secondly, for anyone who's listening, or any of the neighborhood councils, for any of the council members that would want to participate, through DeVry Institute or DeVry University, this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 o'clock, the 12th District is going to have a neighborhood council, chambers and others who are interested, Budget Day. We're actually going to use computers with the city's budget and have working groups sit down with the city's budget and actually have to balance changes to the budget. We're going to make them really think like we have to do. They're going to go through the budget, make changes right on the computer, it'll adjust the budget and tell them whether it is short or over budget, and make them make changes. And then they're going to computerize all the groups that are working, in the example, into one analysis and determine what everybody really wanted to see and how best to balance the budgets. Very unique opportunity. We have a few seats available if any member would want to send over an observer or participant. We'd be more than happy to have them, particularly Ms. Han is chairman of the committee, if you'd like to be there or some of your staff. It's going to be very exciting, USC, hopefully. It's Saturday from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 o'clock in the afternoon at DeVry University on Rosco and Fallbrook in the 12th District, right across the street from the 3rd District.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And once they have the budget all balanced, just ring it through and we'll sail it. Any other announcements? If you have adjourned motions today, please rise for adjourned tributes. Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am saddened to say, and this is recently, I heard of two people who had passed away. The other day, I was adjourning in memory of someone who had passed away in November. This wonderful gentleman had passed away in December 29th, 2004, during which time many of us were on holiday, and there was a beautiful obituary as well in the L.A. Times. But I wanted to particularly acknowledge William Boyett, who is the veteran actor who graced the stage silver and small screen for decades. He was 77 years old. He was born in Akron, Ohio in 1927, and started his acting career after winning the Southern California High School Shakespeare competition in the 1940s. He attended USC and majored in radio and television. Afterwards, he served in the Navy during World War II. Known best for his character as Sergeant Mac McDonald on the TV series Adam 12, William also recognized as Officer Johnson and Sergeant Ken Williams on the 1955-59 police drama Highway Patrol. He was also Luke Spencer's father, Anthony Geary on General Hospital, and he also includes credits from How the West Was Won, films like Rocketeer, The Hidden Among, a very long list. William, who was fighting a cancer for a very long time, was a resident of Studio City and will be greatly missed. Many of you know, and I'm sure you do, Tom, Joan Boyett, who was his wife of 48 years, his daughter Suzie, son Kevin, two granddaughters, and his brothers, John Olafson and Wallace Collins, and he will be, he will miss greatly.
Yeah, I know, a very special fellow. Went to Dorsey High School here in Los Angeles, and we had lunch several times because there's a little old Highway Patrol club that we have that he came along with Art Gilmore, who's the great announcer for Highway Patrol. But William Boyett was a great actor and a great member of the community, and I know his family will appreciate this, like the second.
Thanks, Tom.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I'd like to adjourn our council meeting today in the memory of DeLeish Allen. DeLeish was the 15-year-old student at Locke High School who was gunned down as she waited on the curb for her aunt to pick her up. She had been in a coma and on life support for almost a week, and she passed away on Friday. We have lost so many young people in this city to violence. This one was so particularly sad and shocking, because sometimes we say people are in the wrong place at the wrong time. She was in the right place at the right time, and still, a gang member's bullet took her life. She survived by her two aunts who raised her. They were her mother, they had, it was their brother's daughter, but they raised her since she was a baby. And the one who was waiting there to pick her up has just been so sad because she felt like she was such an overprotective mother. She never let any of her kids walk to school, she never let any of them walk home. She insisted on driving them everywhere, and she insisted on picking them up. So this, again, was one of those, so they were so sad for all mothers, for all parents who say goodbye to their kids in the morning, thinking that they will be coming home safe after school. It was such a tragedy, but we do want to remember her. She was a fine young woman who had great aspirations, great dreams, and was a good student at Locke High School. So she will be greatly missed, but all of us, I think, are hoping that her death will not be in vain, but that we will all do everything we can to make sure particularly that our schools are violence-free from this day forward.
All members. Other tributes? Mr. Viera Regosa.
I want to adjourn in memory of a great friend, Ned Baumann, who was born on December 4th, 1949, in Wisconsin. Ned Baumann spent his youth and young adulthood in La Porte, Indiana, came to Los Angeles in 1949. He went to, on to pursue a love, his love for the arts, and became an avid painter, and much of his artwork is exhibited at numerous galleries throughout the Los Angeles area. He's better known for his love and dedication to the northeast community of Los Angeles, believing not just in the power of one, but in what one person with others can accomplish. He was an active member of the Glassell Park Neighborhood Association, a strong voice for the Anawak Youth Soccer Association. He always believed in the value of an education, and recently returned back to college and was a few units short of receiving his degree. He was blessed with a full life, and he will be missed by all who knew him. He survived by his mother, Eileen Baumann, and his son, Ray Baumann.
Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.